Conversation, I was bending their ear, I'm telling you. It was amazing thing. We just talked an hour there and didn't believe it had passed by. But at any rate, a few weeks ago, Mr. Joey Wiganon had contacted me and said he'd like to analyze our current telephone usage and cost. And he said, "I've got some friends that can save you guys a lot of money on your services, I think." So today, we have proof in hand that it can happen. Mr. Appleton probably is more the marketer, but his associate is more in touch with our area of their products. And I want them to, they were with DJJ Technologies, and I want them to kind of make a brief presentation to our council today and show us what could happen if we decide to accept some of their services. And I've reviewed it, and it looks quite intriguing to me. With that said, how about you take a portion of our meeting today, okay?
I will. And first of all, thank y'all for making time. The mayor shared that y'all have some big things you need to discuss, and it's much bigger and more important than what I'm going to cover with you. So I will be, try to be brief, but I want to be here to answer any questions you've got, and, but I do think you'll like what I'm going to share with you. So I'm going to go over some, just some notes here with you guys, and...
Give Mr. some shit.
How we got involved, our company is a end-to-end communications company. And what we do is we help businesses and government agencies with their communications needs. AT&amp;T chose us to work with their government accounts in Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee, they just gave us North and South Carolina. And they did that because we've been doing some work with them for a few years, and they saw how we handled our customers during the, I guess, the selling process, but more importantly, post-sales process, giving a support structure to help after the fact. So that's why we're here. We've been going across the state, helping a lot of the cities, counties, and universities with their communications evaluations and needs. So when we, when we got the bills, we noticed the internet bills weren't in there, and we understood that Freedom Communications done a lot of good stuff here, putting the infrastructure in here, which is great. So we're not even addressing that. Normally, we do that when we go into these agencies and help with that discussion, you know, help tie everything together. So all we looked at were bills for basically your plain old telephone lines at all of your locations up here, okay? And I'm going to put my eyes on here and sort of talk through it, and I'm going to go quick. I'm not going to go through all of the, well, I didn't put all the benefits on here, I just listed some that I thought would be important, but I'm not going to even go through all of those. But currently, the city is paying around, I'm going to rough it out, around $2,100 a month. That's this number right up here under the current situation. And what you're getting for that basically is 28 phone lines per month, okay? Technology has changed a lot, and there's some things that can be done to provide you guys with a much better system that will connect the city and save you money. So what we're recommending to the city is that you look at installing what's called a hosted voice system, which will run right over the Freedom Network. It would include, it would give you 40 new telephones. Now, the neat thing about that is it's going to tie all of your locations together, okay? So if you're sitting here at City Hall and something needs to go down to the fire station or whatever, you can just, you can either four-digit dial down there, like an extension, just like they were in the same building, or you can, if a call comes in and you know, hey, it was supposed to come to fire and rescue, you can transfer that call over to them. So it's going to, number one, it's going to give you a lot better communications between the locations. It's going to include all your, all your lines, and I shared with the mayor, you'll get to keep the same numbers that you have today that people know when they want to call the City Hall. It gives you a lot of other features, but I understand that there's at least one member that's on vacation right now, and one was sick or...
One included.
One's, one's not feeling well. One of the real good features, has anybody ever used a, what's called go-to meeting or...
No.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about. That service is about $50 a month per service. With this, every user in the, on the system has access to what's called Amazon Chime, which is even easier to use than go-to meeting. But we literally could be sitting here, and the member that can't be here because they're sick could be dialed into this call, and they could be seeing everything that's going on, just like the presentation the mayor was on earlier, he was looking at everything over the computer. They could be there, and if the person at the beach or wherever they are on vacation wanted to be here, they could do the same thing. Or, I told the mayor, what if the guy on vacation said, you know, or lady, I don't know, what, what if, they said, you know, I'm on vacation, I really want to spend time here. Those calls can be recorded, so, and you can email that over to him, it's just a link, and he or she could go and click on that link and watch the whole meeting live, or not live, but the recorded meeting. Not only the voice, but the video. Point being, this really helps the city, and it's, it's a service that you're seeing more and more counties and cities and universities going to because it ties everything together. It provides y'all with 24/7 by 365 support, all the maintenance is included, so you're not going to be, if your phone system had a problem today, you probably got to pay somebody or you're paying a maintenance contract. That goes away. This is included here. I was kidding with the mayor, I said, if he got mad about something and he hit his phone and broke it, all he does is he calls an 800 number or emails an 800, emails a support number, the next day a phone's going to show up and plug it in. So the support is that simple. We're going to be here to install it, we're very good at this, so it includes, it gives a smooth transition. Now, I've said a lot, the most important thing of all this though, is right now you're paying about $2,100 a month. We're going to be able to do all of that and, and for, right at $1,040 per month. So you're going to almost cut that piece of your bill in half and go from basically having just plain old telephone lines to having all these lines plus 12 more, because you're going to have 40 instead of 28 available if you needed them, and all these, all the equipment I just talked about. Because we work with AT&amp;T, this proposal that we gave you guys is a, is, we represent multiple products and services. So, you know, if, if for some reason you had a knowledge of a hosted voice system, you said, really, I like the idea, but this is, this is what we prefer to have, we can do that. AT&amp;T has a hosted voice solution on state contract, and that gets into the purchasing and stuff, because if you can purchase things, a city and county and universities, you can purchase things right off of a state contract, and, and it's easy to do that. That price would be a little bit more than this one. But we came in here because we can save you a lot of money, this is what we're doing for a lot of the cities and counties across the southeast. And Kevin, just so you understand, even though we're working all across the southeast, he is the state director here. He's responsible for the state, so you have somebody who, who has, you know, authority and responsibility for this area. We have a lot of people on our staff, but Kevin is the guy here, and I just, you know, it was important for you to meet him too. So, I tried to go fast, hopefully that's fast enough, but it probably, I went so fast you may have some questions. The page on the back, just so you know, it's sort of the audit we did. Those are the bills we had, and where, what you're paying for what services. And so, you know, the nice thing for the, for the city, you can make sure that, you know, we do the audits as we go in to help people understand what are all their bills that they've got, and what does that consist of. So, any questions?
I don't know enough to ask him.
I understand.
I just, I just love it, just pretty much used every phone service in every department. She's been in the police department, now she's city clerk, and she wears lots of hats. She normally would have questions at this point.
Just one that kind of popped in my mind, would the number stay the same, like if the different departments, we already have, their number would still be the same?
We would port those numbers, we handle that, we'll do that and make sure that happens.
Would all of the, all of the people that's working for the city, would they all be put in together, more together than what we've got now?
Yes.
You know, I guess, what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
The water department always got all of their numbers, everything comes in, they don't know probably what's, I don't know this, what's happening there, because everything's different.
Yes.
But this would all be together, is what you're saying.
It would be almost as if everybody was in the same building. Everybody's on the same system.
Yeah.
But this could, it's changing it.
Right. He could transfer a call to you, or you could just...
Yeah, see, he's a fire department, then you got the water department steward, you know, guarded, everything.
I think that easy dial is going to make us feel more together. If you dial four digits, you'll be talking to somebody that you want to talk to, whatever their station is, and I really like that concept.
So would that still require, like, we have a lady downstairs that answers the phone for here, would she be answering it to distribute it all over the city?
That's how, that's up to you guys. Like, so if you've got numbers that people know to call there, that can stay the same. But a lot of people don't know who to call, they just know they need to talk to somebody in the city. The nice thing is, the lady here, when that call comes in and they say, hey, what's the number to the fire department? She could say, well, this is the number, but I can transfer you, and she'll just transfer the call right there. It's a, it's a way to take care of the constituents in a more efficient way.
You're a better service to the people.
Yes, yeah.
There would be a little bit of training on the, on the new system.
Yeah, and we would do that.
Do the training.
But you can, and I'm not suggesting you do this, and I'm not suggesting you don't do this, you can set up auto attendance to where a call comes in, you can say, "Thank you for calling the City of Hamilton," you know, "for the fire department," or "for the City Hall, the mayor's office, press one, fire department, two," and it would then transfer that call. You can do that, and that stuff will work with you on, you know, and, and what we do, again, I go back to why AT&amp;T chose us, a lot of people will come in and train you, and then they're going to say, "Hope, good luck." And we don't do that. You're going to sign off on, you're being trained when you tell us you're trained. Because what happens a lot of times when people come in, they think they want it set up a certain way, and after they do that for a little bit, they go, well, could we do this? And we're here to, that's what we do, that's the kind of things we do above and beyond that separate us, so...
And how much money are you saying this is going to save us money, or it's just more?
No, it's going to save, it's going to cut your costs for the services in half, from, about, by 49.5%.
Yeah. So you'll be essentially saving $12,000 a year.
Yeah.
Well, what are you saying is going to cost us to get all of this stuff put in?
There, this is part of the service. We have a, one, the installation and training is $750, but then you save, you know, $1,021 a month. But I, but it's on that other document, we have a $750 install fee, which is very inexpensive for what, what we're going to do to be here to set that up for you.
And how long have you been in business doing this for other towns?
Well, we've been in business for over 12 years, okay? And, and the business, all of us that had been in that business have been in the communications industry since back. We were laughing about technology, and we were talking about him in the banking industry, you know, and when the fax machine came in. I mean, we've been in the technology business since the early 80s, okay? But this, our business has been here for 12 years. AT&amp;T asked us to get involved with the government's organizations this year, and we've been doing that now this year. And because of what we're doing, they keep adding states to us, which is good, you know?
And this is a 36-month term, like?
Yes.
And after 36 months?
You can continue, you can continue, oh, I'm glad you brought that up. With this service, you know, like on your computer, well, on your phone, every now and then, if you've got an iPhone, you're going to get something that says, you need to update the newest version. You have, you get those versions with this. Everything's updated for 36 months. If they come out with something new, it's updated, okay? After 36 months, you can continue, you can take it out, you can, you know, renegotiate if there's something later and greater. I can assure you, when 36 months gets near, we're going to be up here talking to you, I mean, hopefully we'll be here before 36 months, but we're going to be up here saying, hey, here's some things to think about. The one thing I do want you to, that, as you think through this, and we can talk to the people at Freedom, but a lot of the cities, because having internet is how people function so much now, you know, that's how people do business. And a lot of the cities are, are putting in backup networks, okay? So that if you have, one network goes down, you have a failover. Does that make sense? You have a redundant network. It'd be like...
Backup generator.
It's like a backup generator. We probably have saved enough money that you guys would need to make a decision that says, hey, let's just save, let's save the money and improve our efficiency here. Or you may say, look, that backup network is something we ought to look at, and that's not taking anything away from Freedom, but Freedom can't, they're, they're the same company, so they can't give you a redundant network, okay? We can look at getting you a redundant backup network for probably less than you're paying today for the, so, for less than $2,000 a month. We can also probably add you a backup circuit in here to give you a, you know, a redundant network, so that if this, if Freedom went down for some reason, you would have another circuit that would kick in to keep the city operating. And you said it best, it's like a generator. But that's, what I'm saying to you guys is, this is great, and it is cutting your bill in 50%, but in half. But we probably have enough in there, if you guys wanted to look at a backup network, I can get you that price real quick, so...
When they first contacted me, I heard from Mr. Joey Wiganon, he has relatives, they're from north, the north part of this county, and he's like homeboats almost, and he said, "I've got something good for you. Send me some bills, and we'll analyze them, and we'll come show you how good it is." I knew Joey's brother, and I made connections right away, and, and he in turn got with his folks that he knew that had this product, and Mr. Appleton contacted me, I said, "I think the council would want to listen to this," and that's why he's here today. We tried to put him on the front end of this, because we knew we had some other stuff we need to cover today. And we don't have to make a decision right now, we just wanted to hear him out, and if you want him to explore some other avenues and reprice this to us, he's willing to do that.
If you, if you know of another service, I, I think the biggest thing is, if, I know legally y'all can buy off of the state contract that's in place for the state. The price will go up a little bit, okay? And I can get you that price if you need that. There may, we, we, I asked the mayor about the purchasing process here, and he had the right answer, that's going to go through our legal, and you probably have a good understanding of that too. You know, there are some places we go to, and they have the authority, as long as the price is going down, and it's a service, they can move forward. If you need, if you like this and you want to move forward, but it needs to come off of the state contract, I need to reprice it with the AT&amp;T hosted voice system, because it's on the state contract. This one is a, we've, we've installed a lot of these systems, and it's less money, and that's why we brought that in here. That's what we do for most of the city and county departments, because this, and it has some things that we think are beneficial with the, the Amazon Chime, which is like the go-to meeting and things like that, as part of the service.
I think also there are just three addresses up here?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a fourth, maybe, fourth location?
I saw some other addresses, I think we have, did you look those addresses that's on that street? I, I think we've got maybe one or two...
Uh, yeah.
Locations that didn't get included. I don't know how the billing, the billing may cover all those places, I, I don't know if the fire department, the police department, the library, and the city hall, and maybe the water department, I don't know how the billing's come. This is just the bills they got to review.
Yeah.
Was from those three addresses.
I know mine comes here. I never seen the actual phone bill.
736 Oakdale Street South, 371 Seventh Avenue Southwest, and 350 Baxter Avenue West are the addresses that come in bills they review.
That'd be the library here and police department.
Yeah.
I'm sure the street department's combined, you know, these...
You have a separate system from the city?
No, it's, the bill comes here. I never seen it, it's included.
We may, we may have covered everything.
Well, what we would want, what we would do is if that's the case, and you guys said, let's move forward, we're going to want to have a final, because not only about the bills, but the physical location, we need to know, because we got to make sure there's internet there, and then make sure we got all the phones, because right now we've got, was the count, we came up with is 40 in the entire system.
What's your address?
561 Sixth Street Southwest.
Okay, so we know that, that location's not in this groupie.
Yeah.
The street department's not in here.
What about the street shop and the water department shop? Would we need to list those, or they just build under?
I think they're built under this, from what I...
I think they're in there.
We got all the other locations.
We need to know that, physical locations.
Okay.
And by the way, as long as the, we put 40 phones, because that's the information that Joey had gotten. If it's less, you're, it's going to go down a little bit, if it's more, it's going to go up a little bit. It's roughly, I think, you can do the math, I think it's roughly $25 a phone per month. But that includes everything, that's, that, that's the maintenance, the warranty on it, everything, the support, so...
Well, we know, we, we looked at 28 phone lines, now we're going to 40 phone lines and saving 49.5%.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Police department's not on there.
And we're interconnecting our city while we're doing that, we're one trunk line and one, one switchboard, so...
Could.
Could, forward a call to any of these places.
Yes.
And we can't do that.
Vice versa, yeah. I'll tell you what, if I could, if I could get your, either a card or email address where I could email you, and then I'll work with you to make sure we have all the locations, you can just write it on there, wherever?
Okay, I think Amy is the one, didn't she?
Okay, is that who I need to get?
Amy's been doing that, she's my...
Okay, I'll, I'll get with her as I go away.
Great.
Let's, let's do that, and I may want you to come back to a council meeting the night we put you on the agenda and see if we want to vote to do this. But I appreciate the presentation today, and if y'all have other questions, if y'all have other questions, you need to ask, come right up, otherwise, we'll need you to come back at a future date when we get it shored up.
Yeah.
But I love the idea of saving 49.5% on the bill, and $1,000 a month gets my attention.
Well, and, and what you get for doing that is just, you know, it's, it's a lot, you know? So, so we appreciate y'all's time.
Yes.
Sounds like a better system than probably we've got.
Yeah, we're just not used to coming in here with...
Joe was, Joe was...
Well, you know, the neat, the neat thing about, one of the things we really enjoy with the work of these accounts today, knock on wood, every city, county, university we've gone to, we've been able to save them because of the technology changes and things that have happened. So, you know, we like that, and, and every message is a good one. You know, we're, we're giving them so much more and cutting their costs, so...
Generally, it's 40 to 50% and over saved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You know where Amy's office is?
I do.
You'll just ask her, she's the one that got all this information together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate both of you.
Thanks so much.
Good to be here.
Good to see you. Nice to meet y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Bring your karaoke tape, that's time you can't wait to sing.
Sounds fun.
He's a singer. Okay, tee for up.
All right, and this just come up last week, just out of the blue, I had Ron Lopez from the gas office, said, "Hey, we got a truck coming up that's in pretty good shape, real good shape, if you might be interested in it." So I went and looked at it, we've got a, what we've been using for our station truck, around the station pulling the fire safety trailer and stuff, is a '97 model truck that's just falling apart. Seat belts don't work in it, and I really don't, won't let nobody drive it unless we're just pulling it to the elementary school and back. He's, he said, "We got a truck, it's 2007, 2008, I can't remember what model or number it was, but they're asking $8,600 for it."
It's a Ford four-door truck?
It's a four-door truck, it's four-wheel drive, we could use it for multiple occasions on different stuff. I still got budget left in the equipment, even after the other one. I, it just come up out of the blue and I...
How many hours this guy on?
The one that the water, the gas office...
This, this here?
Yeah. Uh, it's less than 170, I can't remember right off the top of my head.
How much is it on?
$8,600.
Okay, that's, how much is on my, are you asking how much is on my '07 or '08 or '08?
The one, the one I'm looking at down there?
Yeah, one you're buying.
Yeah, it's, it's less than 170. I don't remember exactly.
The one you're buying?
The one I'd like to look at, yes.
About 170,000.
And, and the reason, that truck we got down there, when Harry Williams retired from the gas office, we got it, it's a '97 model, and it's just, it ain't got good seat belts in it, I think the driver's side is the only thing that halfway works. And it's, I'd like to sell it, put it on gun deals and sell it.
Now, listen, I'm not against what you're talking, because I know, you know what you mean, what you need.
Right.
Well, what are you going to use this truck for?
We're going to use it at the station to pull the fire safety trailer if we go, we need it.
You need heavy duty, something that four-wheel drive, not to do that well?
Yeah, because we got some higher...
Reason I'm saying, I know for a '97 model, that you could buy one with less than $100,000.
Well, no, 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 '97's the one I want to replace.
All right. Yeah, but you're going to get a...
2007.
Yeah, 2007.
And this is, this is a work truck.
Yeah.
It's not nothing fancy, it's a work truck, and that's what we need.
Well, what I was wondering about though is the hundred and something, hundred and...
Yeah, well, I, I looked at the service record, well, yeah, but you ain't going to get one with less than $10,000 if that were.
Well, I, I, that's, you know, the reason I was asking, I'm not, you know...
It's got good tires, I just, I checked it out.
It looks like they'd sell it to you cheaper now.
I wish they would.
Make them offer, they don't...
It started out at $10,000.
Well, they hadn't sold it, they hadn't sold it because it's got 176,000 miles on it.
They offered it to us, and I said, "I'll just have to go see."
Yeah. I'd, I'd make them offer on it, because it's going, now, I'm not being hard, don't get me...
I understand, I understand.
But, but it's going to be hard for them to sell something for that price with that many miles on it. But, but it's gonna be hard for them to sell something for that price with that many miles on it. Cause that many miles is worn out, just like the one you got, just about, you know what I'm saying? But you're gonna have problems.
Yeah, problem.
You're, you're gonna have problems.
It's hard to sell a used one that anyway.
Yeah.
You can't get it out of there.
No, uh, they can't find it. And well, ain't nobody in bid and just gonna buy something with a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles on it. So I would make them one, you know, cause.
I can go back to them and see if they've come off of it.
Yeah.
You know, I don't.
Well, you see, we're, we're a part of the gas company. I'd offer them six thousand dollars for it because it's got, and that would give you a little bit then to work on it for the first year or two. But anything with a hundred and seventy, you know, I wouldn't even think about that. Anything, you know, for myself and.
I was looking at it as a work truck.
Yeah, but I don't care what you're gonna use it for, when it's setting tore up over there, it ain't, it ain't gonna do you no good.
I understand.
Anything with a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles on it, worn out.
I mean, I can look further.
You're, you're looking.
I can look further, but I don't think we're gonna get nothing for eight thousand dollars, no work.
Well, you know, what would that truck sell for? What did it sell for new when it was new?
I don't know what, what it was new.
I can tell you pretty close.
What is, what was it new or?
It'd be above fifty probably.
Yeah.
With, with, with scum.
And it come off a state bed, I'm sure, you know, so that probably knocked.
It cost them that much probably.
That probably knocked it down some, cause they get, they have to, they do state beds too, cause they're part of.
Well, I'm not gonna vote against it, they might agree with, that's, that's fair. I think, I still, I think you bad problem.
I went over and talked to Heath about the truck. The Davis boy, that's his highest assistant drove this truck and he serviced it right. And I'm, I'm gonna say it's probably the best truck they put out faster. After so many years, they take them off the fleet and he told me it was a real solid truck, had never given any trouble. And that he feels like he can get more for that, but he's holding it for the city if we want it. He said, I think I can get, sell it for more than I'm offering it to you for.
It could be all right, I'm not gonna vote against it, but I sure, I sure wouldn't buy it for Gene.
Like I said, he don't.
I would like to me, he wouldn't.
Two, yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't.
It's a worn-out work truck. I mean, it's worn out.
I mean, I.
It's taken a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles.
I just don't, I don't wanna go spend a bunch of money on something that they're gonna be crawling in out of weed eating and pulling trailers and stuff, I don't, I just don't.
Go on it day anyway.
No, no, I just bring it to you to, let's talk about it.
I sure won't go again if that's what you wanna do, but don't, and by six months coming back, you know that truck?
I hope I'm done when I get this and get some people heart, I hope you don't see me for a year.
Well, you see if that's right bottom of the.
I'll, I'll talk to them, I will, I will.
You have to watch them people.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them and find out.
All right, chief.
They figured it's a good, they figured it's a good place to dump it. They ain't gonna tell you, they ain't gonna tell you no if there's anything.
The last three trucks we've got from them, I still driving one.
Yeah, we bought several from them.
Oh, I know, they used to buy them all.
I've had it for.
So is the mayor's.
Eleven years, six years.
He was. Long as he's running, serving, servicing, they'll be all right.
Well, he's the one that brought it to me and I, the one I'm driving, I've had for six years and it's got over two hundred and something thousand miles on it.
Yeah, we got one from the county, that's an eighty-something, that's got around two hundred and eighty on it.
All right, boys, y'all gotta be convinced.
All right, as long as we got you convinced, then we good, ain't we?
I don't know, you think.
That's not, that's not something that all of us would want.
I just, I just don't know anything about trucks, but I, I know that I wouldn't buy one with that.
I wouldn't, and, and if.
I guess everything I own were out.
Mine too. Well, driving it every day and this, driving it, pulling trailers and stuff, you're not driving it every day. You know, I mean, that ninety-seven we got, I won't let them drive it because if they get wrecked and seat belts don't work, y'all gonna come looking for my head. You know, and I just, I don't wanna let them in it.
No, we should have had them seat belts fixed, we wouldn't come, we wouldn't come look at your head cause you didn't have them seat belts.
Yeah, it's just falling apart all pieces.
Fuel, fuel injected pickups motors, last one with an carburetor type motor.
Is that what that is?
Yes, yes.
That makes a big difference in the life, in the life of one.
All right, that's all I got, y'all done with me?
Just do the best you can to get the price down, if you don't, I guess they'll, they'll tell you to buy it anyway.
All right, I'll see what I need.
Then you'll, you'll have, if you get it down to ten thousand dollars, you'll have ten thousand dollars to spend on it.
I'll go back to the bar and take it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Let, let me know if you.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to him. I'll get up with him tomorrow, I'll talk to him.
If we're gonna move on this, we'll need to get it on the next agenda.
I'll get, I'll get up with him mid-morning.
Otherwise, he's gonna.
See you, bud.
Price individuals.
See y'all.
Okay, our next item, we've got work going on, if y'all haven't noticed, down south of town today. The machinery's moved in at the Sibley site. They're moving dirt, that, that has started and we should have a new nice station down there in the next five and a half months completed and up and running. What we've done, we've met with Mr. Sibley when he started to come here and talk to him about our need for developing our interstate and our sites out there, and he's agreed to do that. But in spending this much money, he's gonna need a little bit of help on, for the first few years. He's got fund all this that he's doing and he's gonna need a little bit of tax abatement on some of this building he's doing. And if he agrees to put two stations in Hamilton, I'm gonna recommend that we give him a three-year abatement on this station down here. Half of his fuel tax, gasoline and fuel tax, and half of his internal sales tax off. And if he'll develop the first station out on exit seven, I'd like to give him five years out there, same deal, fifty and fifty, fifty percent off of this. And he is gonna spend millions of dollars by the time he gets this done. He'll have three or four million dollars about laying his, capitalizing these and building them, getting them up and running. That's a big lick for any business man and we don't have anything at exit seven. This will give us a chance to get started out there on our development. And I'd like to have the council consider this. And the reason I don't want to give as much time down here, of course, is that we're kinda in, might be slightly in competition with others that's down there, but if he packages this up, I think he deserves some help on both, three years down there, five years down there. He's helping us a lot to get that other exit started and developed. And he's, he's spending lots of development money out of his pocket and I don't know, probably some borrowed money. But anyway, he needs a, he needs to know and I think we'd wanna put it in writing that all this would have to happen in the next eighteen months if we're gonna do this for him, the completion of both stations. Where he'll have some obligation to the city to fulfill his part of the bargain. I'd like to, Monday night, have this on the agenda, so in case he needs this backup to, you know, say, to use in his financing package, show a banker, well, we're gonna have some help through taxation abatements. I think it would be a real plus if he was feeding the borrowing money.
I think he, I think he needs to get all of his money for both of them.
Okay.
I think he needs, I think that's the only way he can get, you have to be very strong.
Yeah, and I don't think four million dollars is gonna be anywhere about what he's spending.
It may be lots more.
Oh, yeah.
I'm saving a lot of money.
Say a million dollars right up front, more than a million dollars up front for the land.
Yeah.
So you know it's gonna cost more than three million to get.
And that, and he's got room out there on the land he's probably digging seven to bring some more businesses to town.
Oh, Lord, yeah.
He's looking for at least two more businesses to come in with him out there. That's why I'd be in favor of this and I, I think we should work with Tim on this and, and have him. It's, we'll be making money from the get-go because we're gonna be taking traffic off the interstate out there. He'll be making money at this station down here. We'll be getting new revenue that we've never had.
Right.
And that's the only way we're gonna do it. I mean, he can't afford to go out there and spend some great million dollars and without.
Put all the bills in. Well, I, I'm gonna be for that and I, and with y'all's permission, I'm gonna go ahead and bring that up for a vote Monday night, so we can write him these letters and we'll have Scott Knight to word up our letters for us and we'll review them before we put them into his hands, the letters we're gonna give to make sure it's what we've agreed on and what we've promised. And we'll put it in the minutes of the meeting as to what we've agreed on, so there won't be any misunderstandings. We'll put the time limit on him. If he don't fulfill the time limit, then we don't fulfill our obligation. We only get one station that's kind of somewhat competitive to the businesses that are here. We'd be obligated to do the two locations. But if he puts both of them and he helps us get started on exit seven, I'm for, I'm for helping him.
Oh, yeah, that's on, smaller towns, that's about the only way you can get a lot of things now. Especially something as nice as what he builds, if you've been up there and saw what he's got, he's nice.
First sight.
Yeah, everything.
I've been in any store there across from Walmart in Russellville, it's a fine layout. It's got one of the best delis you'll ever see inside. They can fix you about any kind of food you want there. And often stop when I'm headed fishing to the Tennessee River, getting me a morning biscuit there and it's always great. That's, that's what I'd like to talk about on Tim. One other thing, and he's talking to Mr. Clark about an outlet road for, for traffic. He's gonna be moving a lot of traffic back onto the main highway there at the red light. He's wanting to talk to Mr. Clark and get permission to, to go across the back part of that lot and have an exit that's where you can turn some of that traffic out on that side street. And we may have to assist him a little bit to get a little paving done right there.
It ain't much there.
It's probably about maybe football field length or so of, but we may have to help him on that little service road back there, so that, that could fall on us if, you know, back there, that's, that won't be on his land, but it'll be on the roadway that's given to him. But he's working on some roadway right now.
Well, that's Ken folks, you know.
Yeah, maybe that'll work out well for him. And he's dealing with maybe a cousin or.
Yes.
Maybe they can get that worked out and maybe it'll, it'll help both of them and especially help move that traffic that's gonna be going in and out of there. It's straight across from Walmarts, there's already, there's really a lot of movement there, so they'd like to send as much traffic as they can out on the side street or make it easier for the customers to exit. Anyway, that's the only other thing I had on Tim today and on the alcohol tax matter, we've had some research going on today concerning the taxation that we're collecting. There's questions been asked as we're collecting taxes on alcohol, which would be your whiskey type alcohol, if we're collecting on beer and wine as well. And I'm hoping Angela may have been able to, she's been trying to make some contacts. Have you found out anything yet?
That seems to be the million-dollar question. Amy and I have, I've contacted the ABC board. She and I both talked to RDS that collects our taxes for us. And when it's broken down, it does show that we're collecting taxes on like beer, taxes on wine and taxes on alcohol. So it's broken down separately, but we, we really can't get clarification on where those taxes are coming from. You know, if it's, if it is a, there's a little more tax on alcohol, it seems to be a separate entity, but on beer and wine, we can't get clarification if that's just the seven percent that's coming off of our sales tax, if it's actually just sales tax that we're collecting for the, for alcohol sales. So that's, we're trying to get a little more clarification before I.
I have a pretty good idea, that's what it is, seven percent.
Yeah, it's just very confusing when you look at those reports.
Cause your alcohol and your beer and wine is completely different, is my understa, I don't know. But that's my understanding.
This is what, on our tax report from RDS, it says alcohol tax, ninety-seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Beer tax, twenty-two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents. And wine tax, a hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-two cents. That represents one month, that's the month of May. It's broke down in three categories. But I don't, what we're trying to figure out is if we're getting more than just sales tax off beer and wine. We know we're getting extra on the alcohol products that's called like what we call liquor, whiskey.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't know what we're getting. I would've thought.
You know, on wine, you'd have sold more than that.
I would've thought that beer would be a bigger seller in volume than, than liquor.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But we're, we're getting lots more tax off of, off the liquor, off the alcohol than we are beer and wine.
Yeah, you know beer is a big, the biggest seller, looks like you'd have.
That's the breakdown for May.
And we sure need.
And we're getting, according to twelve months, we, we, Angela and I worked on it yesterday, we're getting about eleven thousand, three hundred and some odd dollars a month, which is gonna put us a little over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the year. And we budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand for a year on alcohol tax. What, yeah, and we're trying to figure out a solution and what we could afford to do to gift the schools some money. And we're thinking about maybe, instead of having a referendum and, and, and keeping this situation brewing with whether or not the people are taxed, we're just trying to see if we can afford out of the city's budget to gift the schools enough to make them okay going forward from the city. And, and I kinda thought maybe around a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's what I thought.
A year divided between the three schools would be a nice gift and, and.
It's forty thousand a year plus five thousand dollars.
Yeah, about, not forty, around forty-two each, close to forty-two.
But, but then we, also now, we need to think about something else. That's just for one year, we'll do that one year at a time because the state is gonna come back and do something. And, and we may not have to keep doing a lot for them, but if we sit and pass that and let it go on from now on, it'll be like the other taxes that we're.
Now, the gift we're talking about, Gene, here is not our security officer money. This is, this is a gift to the schools for their in-class discretionary spending, whatever their need arises. And then we're gonna have to still be obligated for the security officers for our portion of it, whether the county, the, the school boards come up with ten dollars an hour for a hundred and eighty days for an officer. We don't know if the county's gonna share in that duty burden or not, but I think the city's gonna get stuck for the rest of that.
I didn't, I didn't see it that way. I thought, I didn't see us giving the school money, they got money at all. They don't have money for these officers. They don't have money for these officers. It's what my understanding that we're gonna give this money for.
But they're asking for, they're asking for money to spend in the classrooms. That's what they, they came to us for. They didn't come for, uh, the security officers. This group is asking for a gift from the city. They're not here for, for security officers.
Well, that's not the way.
They said number one issue was safety.
Yeah, I, I thought, I, I thought all the time it was to pay the officers. But now they've come up now with ten dollars an hour, but there's gonna be a lot more expense than that ten dollars an hour.
Sure.
Plus they're wanting to put them on twelve months and I'm not for that either. I, I'm, they, part of these officers, they're gonna be part-time anyway. You know, if they're gonna supposedly, we don't need them that, when school's out like right now. But we're all, I'm all, I'm showing up screwed up now if you're thinking that's going for that, then we're gonna have to give them more money for something else.
Oh, yeah.
We, we, I mean.
Absolutely. The fact, they're not asking for this money at all for, for security officers.
That's what I thought it was going for. Did y'all not think that? That's what, I thought it was going to security.
No. It's not, no.
But what it asks you for this money just to have to spend?
This is for money to go to each school.
Like their.
For whatever they need in classrooms. Uh, it, it's not for security officers at all.
But we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't need to, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to pay the rest of that probably for a while for the security. So we need to back up a little bit.
I think, I think the, the gift we're giving would be an annual gift, a hundred and twenty-five thousand that comes out of our alcohol tax. And then we're gonna have to deal with the security officer year to year. And, and, and I think for the first year, whether the county has been talking to sharing in that building or not, I don't know. But, uh, we're probably gonna have to put police officers in the school during the school hours for the first year. And we'll accept ten dollars an hour from the county school board toward each security officer.
Well, yeah, well, that, all right, let's get back to the one twenty-five. I think we should give them the one twenty-five and in that one twenty-five, they will pay the rest of the ten dollars an hour, whatever it takes for all these officers, out of that one twenty-five and then they can take the other and spend it on school supplies of what they need to.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna be a lot of money in there getting now.
Oh, Lord, yes. I, I never drink. I didn't think, I, I thought we were just hiring, you know, the, uh, so.
That's not, that's not the answer.
We can't do it right now.
Did they put a time limit on how long they were willing to give us the ten dollars an hour? I don't see that in the paperwork that I have. Is that what you said?
The letter says that they've come up with the ability to, to fund ten dollars an hour to each security officer based on the school year, the, the length of the school year, not a year round, not three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They're, they're not offering up any benefits for these officers. The police chief is wanting to put three security officers on our force. And he'll use them for vacations, let them update their training while the school's out, getting ready for next year. But, uh, this, this is gonna be people that will be on our staff. They'll be on our insurance. They'll be getting benefits, vacation. They'll, they'll be getting, uh, the benefits like our other security, our other officers get. And, uh, we don't know when the state's gonna come through. I think they will come through and offer security, but I don't think they'll have it in place for this next school year.
I think we just need to pay them for ten months.
Well.
And, cause this is not gonna be a regular job for them. This is gonna be probably retired officers and part-time officers.
If we can find that kind of people.
But you're gonna be working them full-time if they're there every day, five days a week.
Five days a week for ten months.
Yeah. So you'll have to, to offer them some type of benefits or something.
Yeah, the benefits is what we were gonna have to pay was my understanding. And that's the reason I was saying the hundred and twenty-five thousand in benefits, I don't know what they'll run.
Well, the groups that have come into our meetings were here for, they were looking for around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars through some source. Uh, the referendum, the referendum was gonna raise between two fifty and three hundred thousand if it passed. Mister, uh, our principal who spoke last of the night, a high school principal.
Mister Denver.
Said that if we could give them the alcohol tax, that, that forego the referendum.
Well.
But they're not looking for security officers out of this money. They're looking for classroom money to spend on.
I thought it was security. I didn't, I didn't, never dream. They, they ought to have money to.
They're, they're saying that, that they don't have the money that we've been funding, twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents per stealing. The lowest, that's where we come in, a hundred and thirty-second out of a hundred and thirty-seven. And.
I, I, I think we, we need to call him in and I think a hundred and twenty-five thousand, they can use it any way they want to. That's all we can afford right now. A gift, that's a gift. And they can use part of it for each one if they want to or whatever they, whatever he wants to do with it. But a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar gift, which we're just gonna save one year at a time. Because if, and if we started and buy, and give them that alcohol money and give them all of it, which is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But what I'm looking at is this, when you're looking at that over the next ten years, that could be up to half a million dollars or four hundred, three, four hundred thousand, the alcohol tax.
We've, we've never reached, we've never reached more than a hundred and thirty-five.
No, you're not going to now, but that one's gonna grow. We're looking for, how many, look at your own these streets, what's already happened. It's gonna grow and you know they're gonna, and people.
We hope that all that happens and we're counting on it.
Well, and right now, I think we're all wrong about the tax. I think we're still not getting the tax we should be getting from beer and wine. I think it ought to be more than what we're getting, you know, and there's not been any tax actually put on it.
I would think with a hundred.
Sales tax, yeah.
We'd think with a hundred and twenty-five thousand plus a ten dollars an hour, that the state's pay it, they could get by.
Yeah, and have some money left for the, the school, you know.
Tell them that's a, a annual gift.
Yeah, for the time being.
Yeah, he's what they all are confused about.
What have we been given a year to, we share thirty percent of this. That's, uh, thirty percent of a hundred and thirty-five, what?
I'm gonna say it's in the forty something thousand dollars.
Forty-six thousand, I think.
I mean, I have to go look to actually give you the exact amount, but it's in the forties.
Yeah.
Is what we're giving them every year.
Okay.
I think that's right.
So. Uh, that's money that hasn't been involved in security. I mean, they say they bought cameras and all this stuff and security cameras and stuff, which is good and I, I'm, I'm, whatever this sent the money for, I'm not concerned about it. I mean, uh, I think it's all been spent for betterment of the schools. And, um, but the money this group's come and seeking is not for, they, they're not looking for security money.
Well, that's what we thought, or I thought all the time, that, that, that.
It's not.
Well, it's got to come.
This money is not, not in any way connected.
The first thing we've got to think of is the security.
I know.
Cause that money.
I know.
That money.
But, but what we need to do is, is, uh, if we're not gonna gift the school and, uh, the money that they're gonna need for their classroom, uh, things, they're gonna want us to declare this election and, and have the election.
They're not gonna want us to declare that election because they know it's not gonna pass. They, they know, they already know that. If you think they're to give it up, they, they knew people ain't gonna vote them.
I don't know about that.
Well, not, not, and not, if you voted on the election, what you're talking about doing is voting for sixty-two percent of us to pay all the tax and the ones living outside the city limits don't pay anything.
I know, I know that.
Ain't nobody gonna pass that. If they do, they're a lot dumber than I thought they were.
But, but we've already, we've already, we've heard from this group. They're either gonna wanna gift from the city or they're gonna let the, the people vote.
Yeah.
It's one, one or the other. That's what we're here to decide today. Is which way are we going with it? Are we gonna let the referendum be held? Or are we gonna gift them enough money to not have the referendum?
Well, we're gonna give them the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
But that won't include anything for security and they're, and they're.
They can if they want to.
And the, the group that came looking for money was looking for money for classroom spending. And they had no concepts of, of hiring officers with this.
That was, that was the way I understood it.
I heard they wanted to sleep, not want to shoot.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Well, must, you know, the principal said, I wanna build a wall where I can secure my, my hallways at the high school. And he, he might use some of this gifted money to build that wall. But the other classroom teachers that's gonna need things for science labs and, uh, whatever they're needing for their students, that, they're not looking, that's not the main thrust of this gift is, is security. Uh, it, it's about, and, and if we say it's for security, I, I think that's gonna be another source for it. I really do.
They can use fifty thousand dollars of it for, uh, their, uh, what you're talking about, the other seventy-five, uh, if they gonna front, I think fifty thousand dollars will pay everything to the police officers except for ten dollars. The fifty thousand dollars we pay the taxes or whatever they have to, you know, whatever they, and then they'd have seventy-five thousand left to do what they wanted to with, that'd be twenty-five thousand for each school.
We can, we can make that available and see if it, if it takes care of the need. I, you know, I, I'm afraid it won't, but I, I'm not unwilling to, uh, make that offer.
I'm gonna, you know, but I, we. They'll be glad to get.
Well, they getting this early. How much we been paying them?
Paying.
The schools.
From the alcohol tax?
Yes.
About forty something thousand a year. It's the thirty percent.
Thirty percent of it.
Of our monthly.
That is forty something thousand there if they did dig it.
Yeah, well, see, they'd still be getting that even if we, they could still be getting seventy-five if, whether they're just getting forty something now, they could get seventy-five out of a hundred and twenty-five and fifty would go to pay the rest of the ten dollars an hour, if they're talking about. And it'd just be the taxes or whatever on the ten dollars an hour, cause then they cut their, shouldn't cost fifty thousand dollars on that.
Cause you're gonna have to pay that officer probably more than ten dollars an hour. They're willing to pay ten dollars an hour towards whatever we pay them. And, and I know, I think Tyler, Mister Knight, uh, spoke to the county commission and asked them, and I don't know what they're willing to do. Uh, if they're gonna contribute to it.
I hope you had a pretty good idea.
I, 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 I have to, I know. Come here. You get to vote on both of them, boy.
That's easy, kinda.
Well, the county commission aren't gonna put anything in and I can kinda say their point too.
What we've, uh, what we've gotta decide, I guess, is to decide what we'll put in the, in the minutes of our meeting and.
We need to.
I'd like to make this as, as a, a gift to the city, um.
There's no easy solution to this. Nobody wants taxes. Nobody, everybody wants the schools to be funded. And we can give this money to them. It's more than they're getting now and they can use it however they wanna use it. If they use, wanna use it towards paint and doors, if they wanna use it towards officers, that will be their choice. That's the way that was okay.
Okay.
We're gonna give them a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
But when, but when school starts back, I think, I think that there's got to be officers in the schools.
There needs to be.
Yeah.
I agree.
There needs to be and, um.
I don't think they need to go another year without them.
No, no. Well, it's, they've never had them before and nothing's ever, and, uh, I've had teachers tell me, this is the thing they've never heard of. Anybody wanna come in and kill somebody, we'll anyway. Wouldn't make a bit of difference. Only thing, we'd get it going over because we didn't have them. But they're not gonna stop anything. Somebody wants to do that, they're gonna know.
It's, it's hard to stop them.
But you gotta, it's like I told somebody talking about it. I said, well, if we don't have them there, it'll be our fault if something did have them and we've got to help prevent it.
Though, though what you gotta look at too is that if a person's coming to a school with those intentions, if he knows up front that there's someone there that's gonna meet him at the door possibly and take him out before he's able to do what he wants to do, he might not show up down there to do it. That's.
He'll do it some other way.
It's a deterrent.
Yeah.
And, and I, like you say, anybody with those intentions usually finds a way to kill them.
A way to do it, yeah.
I've never understood them. How they didn't go to a football game?
Yeah.
They killed twenty before anybody could stop them.
Yeah.
Well, there's already been some shootings at football fields. There's already been some gun play around the state this last year at stadiums and, and they heightened the security, uh, before some of the games and it's a sad thing that people have got this gun thing and the mentality that goes with it to, to take someone's life. And, and, but it's something we gotta be aware of and it's happening closer to home, believe me. I mean, we used to hear about it way off somewhere and it's happened in Florida a couple of times this last year. Uh, Florida's not so far from Alabama.
No, I'd be, I'd be scared of somebody getting killed out here on some of these roads we're out in town instead of getting killed in the school. And we can't do a thing about that, paving those roads and things that need to be paved, hadn't been paved.
We could contact to figure if this, they would accept this hundred dollar value.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, I think the, I think if it, if it comes to them as a gift, where they can decide how to spend it, I think that they'll accept it. But if we say it's gonna be for your security officers, uh, I'm not sure with that stigma on it, I'm not sure it's gonna be a satisfying type of gift.
Well, it'd be, it'd go partly for the security officers, cause the other people are gonna pay ten dollars an hour. And I think these part-time policemen, that's forty dollars a week, four hundred dollars a week that a retired police officer would be making sixteen hundred dollars a month while school's going on.
Plus he's retired, but he's retired.
Yeah, plus he'd already be growing. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. See, it'd just be a, it'd be a, I know if I was in that business, I'd be glad to work for, for not doing anything.
They aren't gonna be able to negotiate this a little bit with us.
Yeah.
Well, there's gonna be, on security officers, there's gonna be some regimented things. They don't have a job description. They won't be just sitting looking at the door all day. They'll be in the hallways. They'll be making sure the bullying's not going on, the drugs not going on, uh, any kind of abuse not going on. And, uh, young people behaving is gonna be what they're about, plus security for the campus. So they don't have a job description. Everybody that takes this job on, pretty much they'll know what is assignments are. And I imagine the rules for a security officer will be kinda handed down by the state, uh, as to what their responsibilities are.
Their responsibilities won't be anything to do with the students, if you're sure of that, that's, they have to do.
Whoever thought of that grammar.
Their, their only thing that they're doing is for the protection of the students, not telling them what they can do and can't do. They wouldn't be qualified for that, I wouldn't think. But, whatever y'all, but I don't see where we can.
Let's see if we can, let's see if we can gift the schools this money that we're talking about and, and make this issue be okay. Um, it, it, it's a pretty hot topic right now and as you can see, it's something that we need to find a solution to. We, we don't need to have our whole community mad and. We, we don't need to have our whole community mad and lots of, lots of things going on. And I don't think any of you knew we were gonna be approached for the referendum for new taxes when you took to our office, but we have been. So finding a solution would be a good thing. If we could solve it and make, make most of the people feel better about the situation, and, and it's come through the city. And we'll do, we'll do without some things to make people happy. And we, we're gonna give away some money that we could very well use in the scope of what we do in the way of services, but we'll, we'll do this and see if it'll help out the situation, 'cause the schools say they need some more money. They're not getting adequate funding. That's what that teacher said. I spent money out of my pocket for these children. She read that list of things that she had done, about ten different things that cost money out of her own pocket, and I think a lot of them in, in that group were saying, we did the same thing. So it might be time for the city to come with some money, and, and maybe it'll be enough. I mean, I hope it is.
So if we started doing that, we wouldn't do the thirty percent?
No.
That we're doing now, it would change to this?
We'll be giving a set amount every year.
Okay.
And let them do what they.
Yeah. This would be, this would be our annual gift to the city.
School.
And we hope the security matter gets taken care of by the state altogether, but I'm afraid that, I'm afraid the city's gonna wind up being, at least for one year or somewhat, obligated to help with the security officers. And, and I'm not sure of that, but I'm just thinking out loud with y'all, and I don't know.
Well, let's see what, let's find out the ten dollars an hour, let's find out exactly, somebody's got to know that we'll pay for ten months if they're gonna give ten dollars an hour. How much more money is it gonna cost us to put them in the school, the three officers? Let's find out and then go from there. And if we have to then, let's turn, if we have to, we can give them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a limit. That'll be our ga, that'll be our liquor tax and maybe five, few more dollars, not much. It'd be, probably be that much this coming year, it'll improve that much.
And I'll try to get some clarification on the alcohol.
That'll grow, it'll grow every year, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, it'll grow every year, yeah.
I really think you're gonna find, I can't understand. Now, this, this was voted in, I think, what, twelve, and when did we go with it? I can't believe that we've gone from twelve to eighteen and not collected the maximum that we're allowed to collect.
I think we have collected. There's just some stipulations that I think.
There was something different, so about the beer and wine.
Yes.
Than the liquor.
Yes.
I remember that. And, and you had to do something to be able to tax the wine and the beer. And I, as I know of, we, the city's never done anything.
I think something's fun of that right there.
It was in twelve, like September of twelve is when we adopted the, the ordinance.
That would be a real strange happening, we've gone five or six years not collecting what we're supposed to be collecting.
But anyway, Bob, I don't know how they felt, but this is the way I feel about it. And I'll go along, if y'all feel different, I'm not, you know, I'm, I say, let's come up with a dollar amount. If we don't find that, about, about that, a dollar amount and set those people with schools down, talking to us, a dollar amount, we're gonna give them for security and the other, that money that they like, they getting forty thousand dollars an hour, say, or whatever it is. And the dollar amount that we're gonna give to them each year for the next two years until this thing gets settled on what the state's gonna pay. Or we'll give it each year for two years until the state settles. The state might settle it next year, probably so. If they say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever, that's, that's get a money that we're gonna give, and it'll come out just like we're paying on something else, you don't know what I'm trying, you know what I'm trying to say? We're gonna give them so much money, they can do what they want to with it.
Yeah, to plan our budget, I think it needs to be a substitute.
That's what I mean. And, and let them do, let the school personnel be the ones to decide whether they wanna use it. If they wanna use it for security, they wanna use it to buy school supplies, whatever they wanna do with it, we're gonna give it to them. A certain amount.
Something else I had in mind, too, is this, uh, when you're talking about that twenty-four dollars per student.
Yeah.
Does that count for what we're paying them? I don't believe that had, was that there?
Oh, I know, it wasn't in there, no. They don't count that in the thing.
Yeah, that's, that's where.
It's not counted that way.
That's where, that's where they're getting the numbers.
But if we just, I'd rather just say, our alcohol money is a hundred and fifty-five dollars right now. Say, next year, we're gonna give you this alcohol money, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And y'all sit down and show us what it's gonna be spent for, and you can put it where you want to, but show us where it's gonna be spent. What you're gonna do with it. And then we'll decide the next year, you know, if, after the state decides what they're gonna do, say. For two years, we'll do that each year, but we're not gonna do it continually until we find out what the state's gonna do. You understand what I'm saying? We could be giving it now, and they don't even need it, they just be wasting it. But we need to know what the state's gonna do before we obligate ourselves to more money. 'Cause the county schools and my kids, I've got them in there, and, and my kids are teaching. That's my responsibility, but it's not the city's responsibility. It's the county's, and, you know.
They're paying the payroll, and, and they're paying certain things. They're, they're paying the light bills.
Oh, yeah, but.
But what they're saying is that for classroom needs, the state just don't hand over enough money to them to take care of the, what the teachers need to buy for their classes to work, and, and that often parents are having to be asked for money, uh, this, other than taxation. They're having to come up with, uh, Kleenex, tissues, wipes, notebooks, pencils, all kinds of.
The test mode is, Bob, the state is supposed to furnish that. That's what the state is supposed to be doing. You know, and, and I know that's what I'm, but the state should, some pressure should be put on somebody to do their job.
You know, we're in school, we had to pay a fee.
Yeah, yeah.
Every year, and I don't know what happened to that.
And we, we.
Most of the parents are telling you, they're paying.
Oh, yeah.
She just had one graduate, she knows how much money she spent besides, you know, uh, it, it, it's, it's not, believe me, it's still costing parents, still, there's needs they're saying that are not being met. That's why they're down here asking for these funds and, uh.
Well, if you give them a million dollars a year in five years, if they're asking for another million, I mean, I know, I, I think.
Taxation was, was one way to raise it, but that's, that's a sore spot. A lot of people don't feel like it's being done in a fair way, and, and, and I can't say it's, it's totally in my scope that we have chits from all over coming and, and just the city folks being taxed, you know, the people that own property in the city. So it's, it's hard for me to get my hands around what is fair. If we give it out of our treasury or out of our budget, I think the city's done its part.
Yeah.
If we, if we come with a nice gift for the school.
Yeah, that's what I say, yeah, I do too.
I don't think the group that came was looking to pay a security officer out of this gift we're gonna give.
Well, I think that, I'd like to expect, you know, I think you that it had to be paid, had to be paid, there wasn't nobody to pay it but out of that money.
Well.
They gonna come and ask you, it doesn't make any difference. They don't care about you or me or him or whatever. We, we were elected to say first of the city business, and if we've got to, we got to take care of a kid, and I'm not against, don't get me, but we've got to take care of city business.
I understand. I told them the other night, we didn't know it's gonna get in the tax business or this. It's something that's been handed to us.
Well, the roads are falling apart. You hear it every day.
Yeah.
I mean, and then they're coming, us to take care of, so what, who, what they should be on is the Board of Education and the superintendent.
Right.
To get something done, not the city, the mayor and the city council.
I understand.
We didn't run to run the schools. If we're gonna run the schools, I'll run it a heck of a lot different than what they're running.
Well, I would, I would say that, that this is a surprise to all the council and the mayor that we're facing this, but but the group that's come is trying to show us their need. I'm not saying that, that the need's not there. I, I don't know a lot about the finances, Jim.
No, I don't either.
All these teachers claiming they don't have enough money to run their classes the way they need to be run.
Well, they need to be on to the state superintendentship and the state.
I can somewhat agree with that.
Hello.
Thank y'all for attending today. It's five o'clock. They're gonna adjourn.